Four, three, two, one. Hey everyone, Dragon Cowboy here, and it is October, Pink Month, and as I say, I would always do what I try to, even though it's wig form. But yes, we are doing a special D and D tonight. Uh, this is a special session due to the fact, the party is gonna be kinda split up over a couple of days in game per se. And I wanna keep it nice and flowing, but I cannot deny you all the chance of seeing Helen meeting her father in game. Uh, she was gonna be off on her own to do this, and that would definitely take some RP. I knew it could be very time consuming. So with that, we are doing this. Uh, we also have Becon who does Bastille for uh, cuz he, let's just say Bastille's having a stay at the embassy, and uh, wait, this is all working out for the intelligence gathering as this is becoming. Bastille's kinda like the one, all the information's being dropped on, and he's gotta sort it and make it work together. Though, it can be explained more in RP session. Due to how the timeframe is, I will tell you how this all fits in, but we're jumping to the morning right after the night where Savanka comes to the embassy and talks to him. Uh, and these two are kinda being late waking up as others have woke up early to get started on their objectives in the game. Aka, Titania's off reading lips is the best way to put it, to get information. Grom's off on, I guess, a religious thing at the, for a Shamrah, and uh, Amethyst, of course, is going to do her thing with Vida and maybe helping try to get some help and information on how to fight demons as well, in her own sense. So, with that, it is Pink Month. Uh, it is, the command is CCS, which Becon is already, he's on top of things. So with that, uh, as I say, this is morning. Uh, this is about a normal rising time for you, but uh, obviously, uh, you got to, you noticing that your other friends have already left out, and you see Savanka kinda like in the office area that is being made available for all of this to you by, uh, LaRocas. As such, and she's sitting there. Now, you notice, uh, she doesn't have as much makeup, and you see some tattoos on her. Like they might've been covered up by makeup the night before. And uh, yeah, I know, you're seeing some things, but I'm actually needing to do one thing, forgot to open up. Okay, so, with that, uh, and the tattoos is like, there's like a smaller style star underneath her left eye. You see kinda like a star with flames around on her left shoulder. Her right has like a star, and you see kinda like a waving star. It's not a full sleeve per se, but it's like a few stars on each leg down, on the legs. If you could see that part, actually, actually, you can't. Let's just say, maybe she had one of her, uh, legs up scratching something or doing something with her leg.
Probably up on table.
Yeah, it could be up on table, and the leg pant could be up so, just enough that you see that she does have tattoos on her legs. But basically the same outfit that she had on the night before. Obviously, this is like battle armor for her in leather. And you both have probably come out of your room, maybe at the same time, or go differently. Depends on how you wanna handle this.
Well, first, Helen gets to roll her eyes, I know she is, she's going to, as the information person is going to be a great, uh, dragon orc.
Okay.
Yep.
No, not as bulky as.
Oh heck no.
Okay.
Yeah. It's more Bastille stature.
Understood.
Yep.
So you're kinda coming out first and coming out to where she's at.
Yep.
Okay. She looks up and like, well, you're rotating your disguises, which is good, but if you're gonna keep disguises up at all times, that could cause a problem with your magic being sensed easier over time. Causing an aura to get bigger and bigger, filling an area.
Yeah, um, if you don't mind, uh, what do you think about maybe having like, uh, cuz I had this, um, makeshift disguise, right? I had like green scales, um, with like nature, uh, pigments and stuff. If there's anything I could do to just like naturally hide, that'd be kinda good.
Well, since you're not gonna be leaving this place, it's not that much of a worry. Uh, I'm sure I could get some makeup to help you out there, but I would definitely watch you using your, uh, amulet of disguise right now in a city that is heavy with mage guild, as you would so hardly know, since you are our expert on them.
Yeah. Just to not bore you with details, I, I just did this disguise for Grom, so anyways.
He kinda raises an eyebrow. Okay. Well, that's quite interesting. And such.
Yeah.
Has Helen walked out at that time yet, or?
Yeah. Helen has walked out and walked into the room, just looking at Bastille and just arguing an eyebrow like, okay, man, whatever. Just, just see, yeah, I expect this from you, but I'm not gonna say a word, but I expected it to be from you.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
She looks over to you, Helen. Oh, good, you're here. Uh, here's a map of the whole city on the table here, and your, uh, father's shop is, and she's pointing over in the rich sector of town, which is to the west on this that has, where she's got it marked as a shop. And yeah, as you can see, it's kind of a over a couple of streets and then straight shot to it. Uh, are you saying?
I just, no, I, I just nodded the information and just studied the map to make sure I understand where I'm going.
Okay. So, uh, your friends are already gone. Uh, they're taking care of what they're doing. Uh, I guess you're gonna have a bit of a quiet day till we get you some information. Though, I do have a, and she pulls out from behind her a packet of like papers. Here you go, Bastille. Uh, this is what I've gathered so far about their activities over the last month or so. Uh, if you're well, if you see anything that could be truly of import, you could go ahead and start separating this all out today till we get you more information.
Sounds great. I'll get on it.
Good, good. I will be, uh, out for a bit, try to help get that armor that, uh, Grom wants. Uh, even though Yarik is working on that as well. I'm taking another angle at it, so we'll see what we can do.
Good luck, Team Savanka.
If nothing else, it's ask of her, uh, y'all go do your thing. Uh, I need a, you can use your, uh, okay, Bastille on your role that I will need for you for this paper, so you've got. You can use your Arcana Intelligence, uh, nope, Investigation. You've got Investigation, I'm sorry. Use your Investigation on this, as you are the investigator of the group.
Heck yeah.
And, uh, do me, actually, two roles on this.
Okay.
Going through the paperwork.
So two investigations. Here comes number one. Whoop. Well, there's some opposites.
Well, the crit definitely helped here for you. So you definitely found some papers with remembering how some of the timetable is with the Blood Moon and all, and you're looking at the timetables that they're coinciding with what's going on for the gate stuff. So you're definitely separating that, making sure that's definitely of import to you and such, cuz this is definitely important. It's dealing with demon activity for sure. Along with a few other things as such.
Good stuff.
Today. So with that, Helen, we're going. So, uh, after however long it takes you to study a map, maybe eat a quick bite, you're ready to leave the embassy.
Yep.
Uh, snow on your shoulder like normal, I take it.
Yeah.
Alright.
Although when I leave the embassy, I'm gonna have Snow hidden, just to make sure that no one I don't know if they can track her familiar or not, but I want to keep her hidden for a bit. Like more on the low profile until I get more into the city and then let her, uh, show herself again.
Alright. Hmm, of course, that is just innate with your, with the familiar as Snow is at the moment. But basically, you have it hidden, and you're basically walking. Uh, make me one perception check. Okay.
I am not, I am not best at perception.
Well, it's not, I mean, it's maybe a little bit of a low roll, but yet it still seems like no one's following you or anything like that, which is a good sign right now. As you're walking through the city, you're heading, you're starting into what is known as the rich area of the place, and you do start getting some like looks in your direction of like what you're doing here type thing. You get that feeling from some of the people.
Like, how dare you invade us?
Yeah, in a way, though, if anyone was to ask you and all, due to your nobility stature that you would have in your pack, it would be kinda dismissed at that point, but no one's really gonna approach you at this time of day. It's still morning, early. They're, pretty much everyone's sober, so they're not gonna try to at the moment.
Big guy.
Hmm.
As you move on to, you finally come to where you see the sign that says Quentin on the building, which happens to be your father's shop. The door, door's closed to it, so, and, but there is like a sign that states it's open in multiple languages, probably, even though some of you do not read, but obviously, there's
They're getting the message out.
Yeah, he's got the message in multiple languages that he is open. It's just, door's closed, just which is not uncommon in this city, probably. So what do you do?
Well, first, I take a deep breath to calm myself down, because, one, this is my first time see, meeting him. So I'm kinda, so Helen's kinda a little bit nervous, like, alright, this is actually for real happening. And then I'll walk into the shop.
Alright, as you walk into this shop, obviously, he deals with like magical items like Arcana's does, but his shop isn't as neat, we could say. It's kind of a cluttery little bit here and there.
He doesn't have the woman's touch.
No, he doesn't.
But there's multitude of like items stacked over here, over there, that sort of thing. At the counter, no one's at the counter, but you hear someone in the back that finally says, I'll be out there with you in just a moment.
I just quietly wait for him to show up, I guess.
Okay. Well, you, after a couple minutes, he kinda looks out from back, oh, okay, I'll, I'll be there, and he kinda comes. Now, as he's stepping up, he is about five nine.
So that's where I get my height from.
And, uh,
I said that out of character, by the way. Not in character.
I figured as much, but yeah. And as he is coming up, you are looking him over. Notice he has white hair, cut short, cropped, probably like the way my wig is right now, even though maybe you're shorter on the front. And
I saw the wig. That's epic.
You're almost looking almost into a mirror on the eyes. His right eye is like a light gray, and his left is a sky blue, just like yours. His robes are kinda dirty, though. These, these seem to be like work robes and such. And as he comes up, yes, how can I help you today? Uh, miss?
Helen of the Pack Rose.
Okay. You see him kinda wide in his eyes a bit, like, he definitely knows the name. At least the last part of it. Hmm, a very prominent pack. Uh, uh, what are you here for? Um, Helena Pack Rose.
Well, I'm here to see you, Dad.
He kinda
Did you not catch that? Oh, you did.
Yeah, uh, he kinda looks even more at you, and this is where he's finally now maybe taking in the full visual of you. And seeing the eyes. If you're my daughter, then you would have something I made.
I do, it's on my neck.
You can open up to show him. You don't have to take it off, per se.
Yeah, I, or I could just hold it off my neck a bit, too, correct?
Yeah.
Helen would reach up, uh, keeping the chain on her to put her thumb behind the locket and hold it up for him to see that I am wearing his necklace that he gave me.
He kinda pulls a chair up after looking at it for a moment and just, it's almost like a He kinda pulls a chair up after looking at for a moment and just, it's almost like a. In a way, a shock set down, like she found me. Type thing.
Yes, how dare I do that?
Well. Well, Helen. I guess you have questions for me? And you see him pull out a. Wand and just kinda do a flick of a wrist and you kinda hear clicks on the door happen and. Like rustling of like the signs changing outside. With your hearing ability as a wolf carrier. To our privacy is probably what you're thinking at the moment.
Yeah, I probably figured he did it for privacy.
So. It's now in your ballpark as to what you wanna ask him.
Why did you leave? And why didn't, and why couldn't anyone tell me?
Fair question. You were just a baby, but. I felt like I was gonna have people endangered there. So yes, I did kinda put a spell to not be able to say my name to you in any sort of way. On the people there, or they chose not to say, which I am grateful for. Though you still were able to find me. But I felt like I'm mobbing an endangerment to the pack and all. You did hear me, I hope.
Yeah, I did, I'm, I'm thinking.
Okay.
I, I'm trying to process it and also think of a question.
Alright.
Because I don't want him to know who told me his name.
No, and then again, maybe it's, I mean, of course, that's up to you, I mean, you could state how you finally found out the name and such.
I know, I'm trying to be cryptic with it though too, so he doesn't figure it out.
Yeah.
Hi, Hattie, trapped with. Someone, giving me your name. They also told me that you have hurt people. Killed. That what you did was unforgivable.
Well. In a way, it can be unforgivable, Walter Son, namely Drache's the beat. Though I wish he would at least try to listen to me now. Though he's killed me more times than I can count now, and yet here I am. What I did. Is yes, I killed two people. But I was not myself at the time, though I remember the actions. And he gets up, he's kinda just pacing, trying to figure out how I keep talking at this point. You see a uh tear actually formed by his eye. Now, you're welcome to an insight, see if he's lying in any sort of way here if you wish, or.
I will.
Okay. As far as you know, he is telling the truth at the moment and that tear is genuine. And he's just having a, trying to think of how to phrase things. You are welcome to interact with another question or something.
You said you killed your mother once, yet you're still here, what do you mean by that?
Exactly that, I'm still alive, I keep. Almost like I'm on a non endless resurrection after I've been killed. I do not know why. And I mean, the first few times is understandable. From Drache as he is one doing it, and I know he's not doing it just to be spiteful. I understand his reasoning, now I wish he would be the person I know he is capable of being to li- stop and listen. Though that day. I was not myself, I was possessed. By something, what exactly, I don't know. And it stayed in my body a few times still, either the killing of me from Drache or what. Drove it out, and I've been trying to figure out why I keep being resurrected. You're welcome to any insight rolls you might want to, anything like that.
Can I do a Arcana check to see if it was. Some form of spell? That is making him come back?
Uh, you can do an Arcana check on that as well. If you are believing what he's saying, as I say, you can do another insight check to see if he's lying or not, cuz you don't. I mean, I can understand doubt on your side, and that's why I'm definitely telling you the option too. But you can also do an Arcana check.
Can I do both?
Yes, you can do both.
Alright, I'll do the insight first.
Okay.
Fine, I did on that one.
Yes, you did. Go ahead and do your Arcana, and then I'll. Okay. On the Arcana side, there might be some spells, but this is probably beyond. Human, what any normal mortal person would be capable of. But he's telling the wholehearted truth, he is not lying here. He is not deceiving you in any way or form. He is being trueheartedly honest.
Helen would just. Look him over. You know, reading his body language to see all this and. She just keeps quiet this time. Letting him ask a question or talk. He needed to.
He's kinda stays quiet for a moment and finally. So, there's only a few people that could have helped you actually truly find me, hopefully. It's someone on the better side of things, or. I should be expecting a visit from a certain half-dry, half-elf. As he sits back down. It's kind of a question yet statement to you. Do you wish to say anything, or you wanna just let silence fill the void?
I'm just going to let silence. Fill, be filled for a bit, because Helen is still trying to. I guess wrap her head around everything.
Well. I guess that part doesn't matter. Unless you wish to tell me something on that score, but. I'm trying to be as honest with you as I can be, obviously you wanted to search me out. And you're definitely a capable young woman. Even though I did hear about your mother, I wish I could have been there. Now with your cred on the inside, there's nothing he can buy you, you know, he's genuine about that even.
Okay. I know he's not trying to sneak one past me right now.
Nah, he is like an open book to you.
At the mentions of my mother, I reach up and grab smell here. Create a holder more towards me. Grab her like up near my face and I'll just hold her close.
You see kinda like another tear welling up. So. Are you, was it like your mother or what?
An ice sorceress.
Ah. We'll see.
But I also have. Mom's fire war.
Okay. You haven't tried to experiment with fire magic, have you?
Too late for that.
This is probably the first time you see kinda like almost a shock sadness. Well, I guess it does run in the family. You know the dangers of this magic.
Yes. I have been bored. I have companions with me to make sure I don't.
Well, I don't think magic is what caused me to lose it. That much I'm certain of, I was possessed when I killed those people like I told you. But it can get you off-centered. It's the only thing. Hopefully that helps you in some aspect. Where, so are you just traveling with your friends on the journey?
More than just traveling.
More than just traveling. Is something up?
Father is back.
The first time you see a spark of anger. That effing demon is back, now I'm using. Living on purpose here, it would actually be the full. But. It's like. No, in a way. But yeah, that's what he says, and of course you can nod in acknowledgement that yes, he is back.
I've been fighting against.
Alright, you're breaking, either you're talking too low or something, so.
Okay, alright, sorry. Um. I've been fighting against him with my companions. There's a reason why I was able to come to the Empire. Were able to put a triple.
Anything. I don't know, if there's any way I can help other than my experiences with Tillman, he is. He is a very powerful one, but he likes to manipulate and. Such. What is his goal or plan?
Do I know this, does Helen know the goal or the end goal?
Well, you're trying to keep him from opening a bunch of portals on the Blood Moon, that's. And you've already put some stops in the way, now you don't know how long that's gonna hold, but.
Yeah. He's been trying. A large amount of portals.
Fist comes down on the counter hard, echoing out. Last time I fought him, it was just one portal. It was just one portal, major one, but if he's going for multiples, he's. Definitely changing his tactics up a little bit. You have to make sure you keep three certain orbs away from him. And such. And he starts pulling books off of shelves. Trying to find certain ones, just letting them fall to the floor if it wasn't the right one.
He said certain orbs or?
Three. Keep him away from three certain orbs.
Managed to get one away from him.
Which one? As he's still looking and you see him throw like one book. That is in a language you can't even read. Onto the counter and he's still going through looking for a few others. What you need to know, it's a sphere of Osiris.
Yes, the uh. How's uh the sphere of Osiris?
Well, that's the major one, but there's two others that need to be found. Alright, here's this book, throws it onto the counter. And you see it as historical objects of ancient times. And it's in Elvish writing. And it's like a very old book. Kinda ratted around the edges and such, like it's been around for a very long time. And you see dust flying up like these books haven't been touching quite a while.
Ages.
Yeah, you could almost say ages. And then he finds a third book. Though Helen is doing what?
Uh, she is actually going to go up to the book that he placed down. One of the books he placed down, the one in Elvish and she's just going to. You know, look it over, also open it, just. See what what like. Interest or.
As you open, yeah, as you do that. He is finding a third book, but as you do that, reading just like you just opening it up to a section. You can tell this is written in a more archaic style of Elvish. Meaning at least a thousand to fifteen hundred years old to you. Given your knowledge of how the language has changed since you are fluid in it.
Yeah.
So he gets his last book, which is in Dwarvish actually, so you're not able to read it. Sets it on the counter. Okay, these books definitely tell about the different orbs. This one here, which was the first one, is about the sphere of Coreca. It's definitely one of the minor ones of the two miners, but it can still be used without the major. With certain other magics. On how to do portals, even though I don't know if he'll still try to do the multiple portals if he has to resort this way. And then he's looks in the sphere of Zandria. Is the other miner, which is in the Dwarvish book. And this book covers the sphere of Osiris, but you say it's already been found and out of his reach at the moment.
No. Oh, are you telling me that as? Knowledge for me? Uh, I'm sorry, can we repeat that?
Okay, he just told you the other two names of the spheres, the sphere of Arrakis and the sphere of Serari.
Yeah.
Which are minor spheres to the major, which is the sphere of Osiris. Which is covered in the ancient Elvish book that you had picked up. The other two books, which one you can't identify the language per se. The other one you know is Dwarvish being around as you've been traveling with a dwarf and such. You are. You know it's Dwarvish, you just don't know the language. But the other book, you do not know anything on it. It's definitely not Orcish or anything like that. As you are traveling with people that do speak the language and or probably has seen stuff written in it, so. You're not sure about the language of this book. Hopefully these books can help you. It's the least I can do to try to help against. Bows rounds. He is too much trouble for this world. Just one question, is Dratche actively fighting this battle again?
Yes.
I wish I could join him, but. More than likely you'll kill me on the spot instead of listening to me. And you just see him kinda like, it's like a depression he's in as he sits back down.
Would you be opposed? To trying to tell him the truth with me there?
I am not opposed to anything, though with where Dratche's been for the last few.
Dratche has promised me not to kill you then.
What was his exact words in that?
That's exactly that's his conversation.
Uh. He's asking that for a reason because he knows Dratche quite well. And if you need a reminder, it was actually, I will stay my hand till you talk to your father.
Wait, what was it again?
Basically, he said he would stay his hand until you got a chance to meet your father and talk to him. After that, there was no promises on what he would do.
Right.
So.
I would just. I don't know how to pay any mind on your work, so I'll just pass that part along.
Okay, so you actually tell, he's asking you exact words anyway, so basically you are.
Tell him the exact words, yeah. I just couldn't remember the exact words.
Yeah, and he would be like, yeah. You've already talked to me, so he's not making any promises about not killing me. So more than likely he would try to kill me as soon as he saw me. Unless you can get someone else to help hold him back. I don't see how this is gonna turn out good. Oh, there is a possibility that is if Helen is thinking about who else might be involved on this.
I know one is Goddaughter is involved. And then also your conscience.
Uh, well, the first one about the Goddaughter, AKA Fire Dancer. Uh, nameless mention, maybe.
Yeah. I'm, I guess, will she actually listen? To what I have to say?
Oh, thing is, at least she's in this tower. You can actually talk to her one on one if you wished.
Okay, yes, um.
So you formulate how to say this now.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to say it, alright?
Alright.
Does he know Savanka's Fire Dancer? Like know her full name or no? Does he know her full name? Yes or no?
Uh. He known, he has known of the Fire Dancer name being used by Dancer. Now he does not know if it's connected to the Fire Dancer he knew being John Fire Dancer. So he doesn't know there's a connection there.
Oh, he, okay.
So. It could be, he's thinking it could be a stage name for all he knows, but yet it's not. And with you, it's not because I mean, when she's.
Yeah, yeah, I met her.
So it's how you wanna try to do this.
Let me talk to Savanka Fire Dancer. And see if. She will. Help, wait. Oh, sorry. Drop my seat. Drop it.
Why would a entertainer even try to help this?
Because she is Dratche's goddaughter.
He kinda looks at you. She's the. Decendant of John Fire Dancer?
Helen just nods her head like. Nodding, yeah. Yep, yep.
Yep. He's just like. Well, I guess I know how he wouldn't know where I was located at then. Cause he's already pieced together. It was Dratche that told you.
Right. I figured that out when he first said his name. I was like, ah shit, he knows.
Yeah, there's not many that would know how to track.
Yeah.
So. Do you think she'll listen to you?
Yes.
If I need to come and talk to her, I'm willing to do it on any ground she wishes. Uh, just, you know how send any sort of messages?
Yes. I've been meeting mom's grandma. And Dratche gave me another grandma. I now know how to.
Sending.
Sending, sending.
Ah. Very well. Very well. I guess the best bet would be to talk to. Her and see. And. At this point, you two can turn to like a. You go on trying to talk about some father daughter things for. More of the day. You're not just leaving right out. You're deciding to spend some time with them. And of course, there's a few knocks on the door like, are you gonna open up or whatever? And it's like, go away. I'm busy with someone. It's like he doesn't even care about the business. He's more worried about you.
Fuck off, man. I'm sorry, I know I shouldn't have said that one, but it suited the situation.
So with that. I mean, it's getting closer to evening time. I guess you should head back to where you're staying at. And. Maybe you'll contact me. Tomorrow or something to come speak on terms. Hopefully.
Hopefully, yes. And also going to. Let my companions know. The truth as well. To help. Please. Alter the balance.
Okay. Okay. So. You kinda say your goodbyes, hugs if you so wish it. And then you head back to the embassy.
And then when I leave the shop, Snow is back on my shoulder, but she is hidden. For okay, protection, just to make sure no one tries to follow me and all that stuff.
Okay. You make your way back to. The embassy, uh. Kind of an empty street, nothing to see. There's. You could tell if someone was following you passively and there's no one. You get back to the embassy and uh. Bastille's at the table and you see like papers in one pile, papers in another. It looks like he's been on a roll on that sort of thing during the day.
And I'm pretty organized person unlike a certain males. Do I see Helen?
You see Helen entering.
So I, I wave at her.
I would just.
First off, are you still in disguise or have you dropped it during the day or?
Um, if Savanka at this point gave me some makeup, I'll probably just uh. Got some makeup or whatever. I don't think it would have took that long to get it.
Uh. Yeah, she did do a stop in during the day, dropping off some makeup for you and. Like uh, some piece of, not a full set of armor yet, but just a couple of pieces of the. Empire guard armor. And then she was going back out. Obviously, she's doing like piecemeal ceiling.
Good stuff. Yeah, and well. If it's up to you if you wanna have performance checks or whatever, but I mean.
Let's say she does it and I'm gonna just take the straight number. So you are. Depending on what color you chose out of the makeup, then just pick a random color if you so wish.
I'll say green just for fun.
Okay, well, with some of the green makeup and such. Now Helen did a pretty awesome job of what she had to work with, but now it's even. I mean. And the smell, I mean, you got like a perfume smell there. I mean, she helped. And yet your scales, hands and all look green, a vibrant green, very nice, I mean. Flattering and such.
So of course, you know, highway Helen down and stuff, so.
Helen, is there a chair at the table?
There are a few chairs, yes, there is, and I'm sure, but still sitting down doing all this, so you're definitely welcome to join them at the table.
I joined best on the table, but I kind of, instead of gracefully. Sit down, I kind of almost flopped down.
Yeah.
Huh, long day, my friend.
Didn't mean to do it.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Uh, uh Helen underneath her. If she doesn't say loud, like. For loud, but loud enough for Bastille to hear. She said, he didn't mean to do it.
To be honest, Helen, if you want my honest opinion about this, I, I hope you take this constructively. Your bloodline, they, I could figure from both your mom and dad's side. They're just, they're carrying people and it doesn't surprise me that. You know, he didn't maliciously do anything to said people. In fact, I mean, remember when I was charmed? Uh, him and I can kinda relate on a certain level, so.
He was, uh, possessed.
Go, go ahead and talk normally, cause it's, it's just hard to hear.
No, I said, no, he was possessed. I can't say the damn word.
It's all good.
But you fired, yeah, okay, go ahead.
So I was like, I just wish we could figure it out, I mean. I'm, of course, a novice compared to Sylvan, but. Be nice if I could figure out something, I mean, I did figure out that one spell for Grom, if you know what I mean. Uh, or at least figure out that there was a spell. I don't know, uh, if there's better circumstances, it'd be interesting to meet your dad.
Bastille. There are two pieces we're still missing, there are two orbs that are still out there that we need to get.
Yep, better circumstances, that's really good to know. Uh, what are their names?
Sphere of Araka and the sphere of Sarah. Uh. I'm just not gonna put the spirits in front of them.
Yeah, but we, we got that.
Let's see, just for fun, doo.
What are you doing?
And I, I knew what the names were, I just don't wanted Bastille to learn them, um. I don't recall anything.
Actually, you would have had to roll that disadvantage, but we're gonna say you failed it anyway, so moving on.
It's all good. There's just sometimes, even if it's like an advantage or disadvantage, I kinda just wanna take the role, just, just cause.
What have you done with the three books that he definitely gave you to carry back?
Oh, I put them on the table. I didn't know if he gave me the books to carry back, but.
Yeah, he, it, it was information that you could use.
Use, okay, yeah, I would add that, I would set the books down on the table.
Cool, cool, let's see, and so now of my. Knowledge, of course, I know the dwarven alphabet, I know some fairy, dragonborn, elvish, and orcish in common. Which of the books do I recognize?
Uh, well, you definitely recognize the elvish book. You recognize that another book is dwarven and you make out a few letters on it, but it's just. You kinda make out letters, but you're not sure exactly the word per se, cause of the way the dwarven language is, you haven't learned. The cohesive part yet, you're just learning the alphabet of a way.
Well, this one's easy to learn, Helen, as you probably know, it's, uh, elvish, this one here is dwarven. And I think I'll have a talk with Amethyst. And, uh, she can just flat out, you know, more, it's gonna be more than a lesson, she'll just tell me like the good. Beat, uh, chunky bits, but I'll also be learning in the process, um. About what this says, and try not to take too much of her time, cause I know she has her own stuff. Um, this other one, I have no idea, so.
That other one, no, you have no idea what it could be.
Maybe we can show it to Savanka or just, you know, anyone that's older than us and more experienced.
Savanka's slightly older than Tanya. That's about.
Yeah, that's why I added and or experi- more experienced.
Okay. Helen can do a vantage perception roll, the two, this will be with keen hearing? Even though it's gonna be high, she's gonna have to roll high for it, be able to hear anything, but we'll see. No. Nope. You.
Conceptions not my thing.
You would have, oh yeah, you only have a plus one, you would have had to roll a nat twenty with your hearing.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Uh. Very. From like. Kinda like the dark area of the room where there is a window, all sudden. Out of nowhere, you see. Savanka carrying a chest piece of armor. Of the guard.
She's back.
Which kinda almost startles you two, but you have to realize, this is what she actually does, truthfully. Dancing's just a side gig to her.
Yeah, that's why you got my little excited response of she's back.
Yes, uh, so how's it going, you two, uh? I stopped by to check on Tanya and we're definitely gonna have some good information. I've got her writing it down in, um, elvish, yes, that is her nature, natural language, it's better to do it that way. Uh, do you read elvish Bastille?
Yes, I do.
Oh, good, then no worries about translation there. Let me set this with the other armor for Grom. Hopefully, it's about right size, it's about the best I could do.
I bet we'll make it work. Uh, Helen's got some good information to share whenever she's ready to say it.
She sets armor down, it's like, oh, so you do. Kinda just sits down right there, kinda next to you with her legs kinda stretched out, kinda cross. Looking at you.
Yeah. Helen still has this, um, almost deep thought or just. She has this expression on her face of. How the hell can? It, it going through her mind, how can I help? Make this one situation better, like she's trying to figure it out.
Okay, talk at a normal, we understand Helen's tone.
I, I am actually talking at a normal volume.
Okay, well, it was kinda hard to hear. I don't know why.
I don't know why either, I have the mic right on my mouth. So. I don't know.
Okay.
Um. As I was saying. Didn't lie to me. I have more informa- I have more information, we're still missing pieces that we need to find. Problem is he wants to join the fight, but Dratchie won't help.
She just kinda gives you a flat stare with that. When you said that he wants to join the fight. Yeah, well. With what he's done in the past, you gotta have.
He was possessed. Helen kind of snapped.
Okay, 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 so you're doing the snapping.
Yeah, I was doing the snapping.
As Helen, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, no, he, like Helen purposely did that and all, I'm sorry.
And, and this is where I'm like, Helen, as a friend, I just want you to take a deep breath. Just breathe out a couple of times, then continue talking.
Of course, you're telling truths, so. Okay. She's kinda looking at you for a moment. What all did he tell you then? She's kinda interested in at least hearing this, it's like, okay. If he was possessed. She's interested in what all he has to say. At least from you.
Right, um. So, he's in, she's interested on why I have to elaborate on.
Yes.
For when he's willing to meet with you. And then he was possessed, he did, knew what was happening, but he didn't want to do it. Dratchie actually helped by killing him, least of the possession.
Yeah, killing him like first.
Yeah.
Quite a few times. We shall say, and, uh. You basically give her the whole rundown, let's just put it that way. Uh, make a, uh, persuasion with advantage roll.
Advantage?
With advantage.
That's bad. Oh, yeah. That's a good roll.
Okay. After all this is, she's kinda taking it in. I'm going to hear him out. I've never tried to kill him, I've only. Watched to see where he's been. Cause Dratchie's the only one that's been ever killing him, but obviously if. Something's more to this, I'm going to hear it out, but. Again, my godfather. When it comes to him, he's not very rational. But I'm going to hear the story at least from another point of view, maybe, about my great, great grandfather.
I can, I can send you Sunday. Um, and when and where you would. Will you do it on your turn?
Yes, which I find quite. Interesting as well. After a moment. Let's say at the. Truck inn. I happen to have a stock in that place, so I have a office room we can use there.
When is the time?
Tomorrow would be fine, as I do need to get going here before long. As you know, I do have my side thing I do.
But you do well.
She kinda gives you a smile, oh, I know. What was that? That was just like mumbling to me.
Helen said, yeah, you really do know how to up there, kinda like in a dreamy state. Not know, forgetting that she's right next to Helen. Ah, dreamy state home.
She just kinda smiles and just lets her hand brush across your shoulder, well, see you later. And. About three seconds later, she's gone, you can't even see her.
That was quick.
Helen looked at Bastille. I really want to date that chick.
I don't blame you, I mean, you know me, I'm basically like you, so.
But can you do me a favor and don't tell the others?
If they haven't figured it out already, sure, why not? To, to be honest, if they figure it out, I mean, it's no shocker, I mean, she, she is Savanka Firedancer, so.
I just don't want another match.
No, I just don't think they think anything less of you, so, but anyways, um, let me show you some things that I've found out. And then I, uh, show her some synced up times and all of that, so I know there's some, uh.
Let's do one, your retraction. About the book, before she leaves, you kinda, right before the interchange, you ask her, can you. Do you know what this book is? Oh, that's written in halfling.
Oh. I wish she was still alive. You know halfling?
Hmm, I'm not fluent with it, but I know some of it, but I probably would not be the best one to read the book. But I'm sure I can find someone on it, or at least get a language book for someone to learn it, I'm not. I know a lot of languages, but I'm not fluent in mall.
Gotcha, you can give me the book or. Gotcha. You can give me the book or give me a book to learn halfling, uh, just like Tatanya. I. Strive to try to keep fluent with languages, especially with work like this. It's fun for me, so.
Oh, okay. Uh, no problem. I'll definitely bring one around with what Tatanya's been gathering on the info. And then they.
Thank you.
And then with that, the exchange that just happened and then she's gone. And you're going over some of the time scheduling and such that Bastille's already discovered.
Yeah. And so if Helen wants to react to the blood moon times. How things seem to fit and whatever she can.
Uh. Helen just nods along and just. She's stuck, Helen is right now stuck in a world of. I just talked to my dad. And had. A heart to heart with him to. God, this fire danger time. She doesn't know what to think right now. She is like just in a daze. So you just see her just like. Yeah, uh huh.
Can I roll insight with advantage dragon? So I could be like, well, maybe I should just let her go.
Yeah, actually, that's a good idea.
Helen's not paying attention. She's fucking in her own world. I'm in my own world at this point, really.
Yeah, let me, uh, reload my character sheet. It went to a funky section. I'm like, no, go away, please. Uh, loading, loading, loading.
Oh, you don't play that funky music?
Insight is plus three for you.
Yeah, thank you. Let's see. I got sticky keys and it. It bloop's me to a different section of it. Ten. And then let's roll again, cause advantage. I do separate rolls and I try, actually really try to get a roll. Let's see, nineteen, there we go.
Um, yeah, you can tell she's not paying attention Bastille. She is in a kind of like daze. And after the day she has, it's understandable.
I just kind of giggle to myself. I look at her. Well, buddy, I think, um. If you just wanna casually hang out with me, you're more than welcome to. I don't get distracted that easily from my work. Um, with just small talk here and there. Other than that, you're welcome to go back to your room and relax or just really do whatever.
I think if this is where Helen just kind of snaps out and be like, oh, what?
That's why I kind of laugh louder. I'm like, I, I asked you, what would you like to do, Helen?
Um, Helen, first off, Helen blushes. Because she doesn't really lose track. Of anything too much, so bit embarrassed. And she then proceeds to take off her mother's grimor and have. Snow out and about. Like snow roam around. And starts to stay with the grimor.
All right, do me an intelligence roll on that. Or the, it's arcana, right? That.
Yes, it's arcana.
Yeah, arcana.
Oh, nice.
Okay. Right after stream, I will begin with you. That just unlocked something as you have not meet the milestone yet to go into.
And this is where I like to go.
Yeah, I mean, this is one of those things that you have to. It's, uh. She doesn't know until she opens up the other spellbook. She doesn't think about it a whole lot. Though she might do the sending, but as such. I know it's been only about an hour and a half of this stream, everyone. But I feel like this next part, we can definitely fit in on Monday night.
Oh, yeah.
As such. And have the game plans going as to what everyone else is doing. And, uh. We will just kind of stop the stream for the bit while. I'll take care of a couple of things because I do upload all these to YouTube. And then I, I will. Probably come back on to stream a bit, some games. But with that, Dragon Cowboy, keep on gaming.
Oh, yeah.